Okay. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order of the Economic Development Commission for Tuesday, April 13th. First order of business is to do a roll call for attendance and who's here. So I'll go down the list and please respond. Yes or no, if you're here. No, don't worry. If you're not here, you don't have to respond, no. Dave Hammond, I'm the chair, I'm here. Kevin Bowdler?
I'm present.
Jim Lathrop?
Here.
Suzanne Lane. Rich Bellisdrak is not going to be here. Dan McFadden. Bill Hobbs? Not here. Virginia Abernathy? Not here yet. Pete Robinson?
Here.
Pete's here. John Godin?
Here.
And Colin Hagan is not going to be here. He wrote and said he's feeling under the weather. Okay, we have a quorum, so I'm going to get started. We may have some other folks join along the way. And the first thing that we want to do before we get into the meat of the agenda is to approve the prior minutes. So we had our regular meeting on March 9th. And we had our TC80 subcommittee meeting on March 22nd. Excuse me, on March 3rd. And so for those two meetings, minutes have been, draft minutes have been posted, and I guess I would ask if there are any corrections or edits thereof. Eric Don, is there a motion to approve those minutes? As written?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written. That's Kevin Bowdler.
And is there a second?
I'll second it, John Godin.
Okay, the minutes will be posted and passed to file. So I'd like to say, I'd like to now move in. Okay, so Dan McFadden has joined. So just for the, for the record. Hi, Dan. Thanks for attending. So Dan McFadden has joined. So I'd like to dive into our, our first special feature, which has to do with the cultural district. And Wendy Burry is here with the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Group. And Pete Robinson has, has been the liaison for this effort. And so Pete, do you have any, any introduction you would like to make and to get Wendy started?
Thanks, Dave. Thanks for, thanks for doing this, Wendy. I'll be in video in a minute here, but I did talk to Wendy a while, a little while back, and even though this is an unfunded thing, I think it's really very cool and could be really good for the town. So I could not explain it nearly as well as Wendy could, so I won't try to, I won't even try. But anyway, thanks, thanks, Wendy, and we're looking forward to it.
No problem. Thanks. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because I have a presentation. I'm going to try to walk you all through this and a little bit more. I know we, we started this work last year, right before actually COVID hit. We were, I was on the agenda to come and talk about this. And so we are kind of revamping all these efforts, and I'll talk about them as we go through this. And let me just make sure you all can see my screen. Everybody good?
Well, while Wendy's doing that, I just want to say for the record that Suzanne Lane has joined. So another member to Suzanne Lane has joined the meeting.
Hi, Wendy.
Hey, Suzanne. Great. Everybody good? You can see my screen okay?
I think Dan joined as well, right?
And everybody's good. You can see, I just want to make sure you can see my screen.
Yes.
You can. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So just also, so you know, we are kind of slowly transitioning over to the kind of losing the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition. We were asked by the state in January to actually serve as the designated regional service organization for the Northeast corner as well. So we are now serving all 43 towns in Eastern Connecticut at this point. So you'll see us kind of slowly transitioning to cultural coalition rather than the Southeast, Southeastern Connecticut. So who do we serve? Like I just said, we are the DRSO to support the Connecticut Office of the Arts and the Department of Economic and Community Development. So we are a field office for the Office of the Arts and for DECD. For those of you who don't know that, like I said, we now serve the 43 municipalities of Eastern Connecticut. We are about 550, almost 600 now, actually, with the Northeast Region registered partners with us in terms of who we serve directly. The museums, performing arts organizations, all the things I think I've said to you before. And that is our mission statement, to improve the economy, vitality and quality of life in Eastern Connecticut by supporting arts, cultural and creative community at a time that it is most critically needed. Let me just say that. So just so you all know who we, just when you think about cultural assets in Stonington, this is the kind of pie of the stone, of the cultural assets in Eastern Connecticut, right? So we are about 25% individual artists, 20% for-profit creative businesses, and then a really good kind of mixture and diverse cross-section of performing arts, museums, arts orgs, cultural orgs, historical orgs, economic development agencies, libraries, you name it. Just a quick look at who's our partners. We have 65 registered partners in the town of Stonington. This is the cross-section of who they are in terms of the types. So 35% artists, 28% businesses, and then a nice, again, cross-section of cultural, educational, historical, museum, performing arts, et cetera. Just to give you an idea of what those 65 businesses are, it's 60, almost 60% of them are for-profit businesses. That includes artists as well, obviously. But just so you know who, who you have in your town, and we have that list. But you have, Stonington has a very, you know, great makeup of cultural assets, which leads me to cultural districts. So this was, I think I mentioned a while back, this was actually a state statute that was passed in October 2000, or the last legislative session that did allow municipalities to form a cultural district. Obviously, 2020 blew up all plans to roll this out last year, but the town of Ridgefield did work through 2020 to become the first town that became an official designated cultural district in Connecticut. New London, just last week, became the second in the state to form a cultural district. And we have all that paperwork because we shepherd them, shepherded them through the project. So I'll tell you more about that in a little bit. But first, let's tell you what it is. Cultural district, it is a specific area of a city or town identified by the municipality, which means you all get to set the geographical boundaries for this. That has a number of cultural facilities, activities and/or assets that are both for-profit and nonprofit. It is meant to be walkable and we, and we wanted, we, some of the discussion in London came out about what is walkable? How far is walkable for everybody, right? This is a very loosey-goosey term in terms of what is walkable for, for a child, what is walkable for an elderly person? So keeping in mind that you just want to know that walkable is the, the kind of the goal at the end and accessible. That it is the center of your cultural activities, artistic and economic. And that is a place where your community members come together and congregate, and that could be a town green that is the center of that, and a place that makes the community feel special. Why would you want to establish a cultural district? Well, these are all the reasons why. You can market it to promote arts and culture attractions to visitors. You can promote it to encourage to bring in new businesses, new artists, new entrepreneurs, and new other opportunities, promoting tourism, increasing visitation, improving the quality of life, strengthen your distinctive character of your community. We know from Massachusetts, that is the leading state that has almost 50 cultural districts in the state of Massachusetts over the past 10 years. They have data to show increased tax base, increased foot traffic. These cultural districts do work in terms of economic development, some better than others. Obviously, this is a way to drive that economic growth and expand that tax base, but it is also a sustainable CT initiative. So I know Town of Stonington is, I believe you all are certified town in sustainable CT. This would meet some more of that criteria, contribute to your assets and highlight the culture and history of your community. So lots of reasons why to form one. In terms of assessing whether or not the town is ready, you really do need to look at kind of whether or not you have the ability and you are ready to do this. You assess your inventory, you look at the location of your assets within the municipality. You make sure you're eligible, and we'll go through that in a second. And then the next step would be if the town wanted to form one or more cultural district, you would talk to us and we would actually be your kind of your guide in this process to work your way through us to achieve that. So the standards and criteria around what it takes to have a cultural district. Your municipality must vote, so the Board of Selectmen would have to vote in order to approve having a cultural district. It has to be in Connecticut. Yes, we had conversation about Pocatuck and Westerly. It cannot include Westerly. And so you'd have to draw a line. And based on my initial discussion with Pete and others, I do not believe you have the assets in Pocatuck to qualify for Pocatuck. You have the assets in Stonington Borough, and you have the assets in Mystic on the Stonington side. So it does have to meet the definitions. It has to have defined boundaries that you would define. It has to be walkable and accessible. It has to have cultural facilities and assets. So we think about public restrooms, we think about ATMs, we think about parking, and then all of the cultural assets. It has to have those amenities. You do have to hold at least one community input meeting in order for people to learn about the district and receive some of that information about what they would want to see from it. New London, we had three public and we had six total in terms of New London, of what we did in New London to achieve that. The municipality has to pass a resolution following that community input session, and then it forms a cultural district commission, which I'll tell you about in just a second. Couple things quickly. So a cultural district can span more than one town or city. We had Mystic in mind when we thought about this. We know it's just a zip code, but technically, if you wanted Mystic as a zip code to be, or the actual geographical area of downtown Mystic, you would need to talk to Groton, and the two towns would work on this together. Each one have a resolution. And then you would do this in tandem around Mystic if you chose to do both sides of the river, but it can span two towns. You can have more than one cultural district. You could have three, for example. If Pocatuck did qualify, you could have Pocatuck, Stonington Borough, you could have Mystic. So you can have more than one in a, in a, in a town. But you do have to have the inventory of those assets that is, that are identified and included on a map that would be developed over time, and we can help with that. This is what the map would have to include. Obviously, your cultural facilities, artistic spaces, creative businesses, historic sites, location of cultural activities. So this is where your town greens come into play. Where do the festivals take place? Where are the activities? You know, we think about kind of the parks downtown and all the activities that take place. Seaport has a ton of them. But you're really thinking about not just the places and spaces, but the activities that take place around the town that really do think, you know, when you think about the cultural activities, it is the, you know, one-time events, annual events, things like that that add that character. So the commission part, we spent a lot of time developing this. This took us about six months to work through what we thought was a reasonable and manageable way of getting a cultural district commission, knowing that no town in their right mind wants to form a whole new commission. So we developed three different ways you can achieve a cultural district commission. One is you can choose to actually form a whole separate, brand-new board and commission called a cultural district commission and have all new seats and have a whole new charter and requirements to fill that, as you would with any other commission. The other options are to add it to an existing board or commission, preferably your Economic Development Commission, and possibly have an advisory council that reports to that. I know EDC already has an advisory subcommittee, I believe, that you have that serves, correct? Somebody nodded their head. I believe we talked about this. Yes, you have an advisory committee?
So we don't right now, Wendy, but what, you know, we have subcommittees for various projects. And so if we, I think if we prioritize this and elevated it to that level, then we would ask for members to form that.
Okay. So you have the ability to do that. The only thing, and I'll get into this in a second, is it does have certain requirements of representation. So if I look at your EDC members right now, your current EDC does not meet the requirements that I'll talk about in a second. So you would have to form an advisory council or exchange up the seats on your, on your current commission in order to meet the requirements that I'll talk about. The other, other options, you assign it to an existing board or commission. So for New London, they're going to blend their economic development and cultural district. They are rewriting the kind of framework and governance around that to have their current economic development commission become the cultural district as well. And it would become an economic development and cultural commission. So they're blending it, and that works best for the city of New London.
Right.
The membership. So these are the requirements from the state. You can have your own requirements as per charter of what you want. But if you want state designation, these are the things that you would have to have. You would have to have at least one representative from the following six categories. We've, the city, town or borough, we're realizing that you can't have a government official, obviously, serve on a commission in terms of, they don't serve on commissions usually. But they had thought about anything from a former for selectmen, a current, something else. But so this is something we're just not going to see a lot of representation from because they normally don't serve on commissions. But you don't have a local cultural or arts council, so you won't have a representative from there. But a cultural organization, at least one artist that lives and or works in that district that you define, organizations that represent artists, and there are many in Stonington that do, some for-profit business, a for-profit business owner, gallery, theater, otherwise, and a local business or chamber of commerce. You'd have a couple of options there. Those are the required, you know, representatives. Additional memberships in New London, they added three additional seats based on community input. They added a representative from the Hispanic community, a representative from the youth community, and a representative from the restaurants. Those were what they felt were really important to a cultural district, so they made it permanent. You can also, other ideas for memberships and represented are tourism, historic preservation and history, the leisure industry, hospital, you know, hotels, Airbnbs, educational institutions, and then obviously economic and community development. So the duties and procedures of a cultural district commission are really to think about how you can create goals and objectives for that district, a management plan, cultural assets and mapping, marketing plan, and some goals and success measures for the district. But the idea is that you're really strategically thinking about how you're going to leverage and utilize that cultural district in a positive way to meet the goals of economic development and other goals that might be, you know, in the town. In order, so right now, the state is not offering anything, money, to behalf of cultural district. However, the Office of Tourism and the Office of the Arts are offering, as always, in-kind support for cultural districts. They can promote a cultural district on ctvisit.com. They can, you know, choose to market it, but they've, both offices and DECD are fully supportive of having cultural districts as assets to the state. And once we grow this, putting some, you know, kind of marketing behind those cultural districts, so there are some opportunities. And hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to look for some funding to come to those cultural districts to work on that promotion and things like that. But not right now. These were just some additional, these types, I said, as I said, the kind of in-kind promotion by the Office of the Arts, Office of Tourism, the support that you would get from us and other offices. These are the requirements for you all to become a state, to qualify, to have the state designation, a letter from the CEO, the copy of the resolution, a map, et cetera. That's if you choose to have one, so we'll get there later. And then at some point, a site visit when it's safe to do so, or Zoom video call where the kind of Office of the Arts, Office of Tourism, probably DECD officials would all come down to take a walk through this proposed cultural district, meet with the EDC or whoever the commission is, and really talk about the goals of it. And that would be kind of the last, last piece of getting the official designation from the state. Obviously, sustainable CT has resources available. This would be certainly an action item that would meet the sustainable CT criteria to get points for that. These are the other offices that are all involved, that are supportive of cultural districts. Just wanted, I think I said this beginning, Town of Ridgefield was number one. They just finished passing the ordinance. And then I mentioned some of these items from the city of New London around the community input sessions. Their cultural district does match their existing historic district. They chose to, I think they wiggled a few lines right now, but they'll, they'll finalize that in the coming weeks, once they have their commission seated. And as I said, they're combining their commission and combining them, and they added those three seats of representation. So that's just a model of what the, what New London has, has done just in the past two weeks. So that is the overview, and I'm happy to take questions on anything that was confusing or questionable. But really, then also just to gauge from you all about the interest in in potentially, you know, forming one or more.
Pete, I'll jump in just to say thank you to Wendy and also to organize the response, if that's okay. So Wendy, the way we try to do this so that we're not, everybody, it's not a free-for-all, is I'll call, I'll, I'll just go around the room and call on people. So to give folks time to gather their thoughts, I, I'll start with a question. So it's, you know, first of all, it's, it's an exciting concept. I mean, to think that we could in Stonington promote all the cultural assets that you showed on that pie chart that were for Stonington, which, you know, you just want to look at the whole list of what they are and then, and see what, what's missing from that, and to the idea of promoting that so that people could see what's, what everything that Stonington has to offer is really exciting. So I mean, that's very enticing and, you know, I definitely would want to, you know, give it some hard thought. My question then has to do with, you know, I guess I didn't realize, maybe this has evolved, but, you know, a tremendous amount of stipulations from the state of Connecticut to get this state designation, you know, which you would want, but nothing really in return. So that just seems a little odd to me. And I just, I know you mentioned that maybe, you know, maybe someday, but, you know, is that it, it just doesn't, it's, doesn't seem like, you know, it just seems like, like there's a lot of work there that someone else has said, just so that, you know, just so that you can get a designation. But I don't know, maybe you can, I don't know if I put that in the form of a question.
Right. So they, in terms of reaping the rewards. So, you know, I think the, yes, ideally, we would, in Massachusetts, they, they were investing in municipalities that wanted to form a district. They invested in things like having a professional assessment person come down and do the actual reports on the assets. They were investing in sending staff and teams to come down and help with the guidance around it, and also thinking about maybe, you know, tax incentives and things like that. So yeah, they put more into it, but it was, you know, a long process and a, but, so I hear you on there's no, there's no carrot, right, in terms of forming this, of that? There's no stick either. But, you know, the towns that we're seeing that want to do this, that are interested, are the ones that have long been hoping to promote the assets that they have, that have not been able to really get an edge over other towns. And I think about some of the smaller towns. So this is more of that promotional marketing piece, where actually, I think, the Office of Tourism, and I get that it's in transition right now until we get a new director there, but they are committed. And I wouldn't undervalue the Office of Tourism's marketing pull that they have by featuring a cultural, one or more cultural districts, even in terms of in-kind promotion. That's a pretty heavy lift for a town to get in terms of free advertising for its town as a cultural district. So I wouldn't undervalue that. The Office of the Arts obviously has its, also its platforms as well. But I do think that if we see enough cultural districts formed, we can certainly get the attention to get some money to go into potentially. But it, you know, for what purposes? Just to give it to you to do, there has to be some strategy around it, and we haven't really seen the commonalities until we have probably five or 10 of them to ask them, what would you want money for? So that we can go argue that case where there's an investment there, not just cash.
Yeah, okay. I, I think, you know, you already mentioned it, you know, coming up with the inventory, helping the town develop their commission. Those would be the types of, you know, that's the type of help that would, you know, would help us, I think, you know.
We're here to do that for you. So, so we, we, we've shepherded this in New London. My job was we, we held the communities, the city held the meetings, we facilitated them. We invited the people. We took the, the meeting minutes, we, you know, so we did a lot, we did the asset, you know, we gave them the initial group of assets. So when we're not letting them go just because they have it now, our job is now to help them develop the application and move that forward. So don't forget about the technical support that the cultural coalition can provide in doing some of this.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I'm going to go around the room and I'll do some questions. So the first on the list is Kevin.
Wendy, I think two questions. One was, is there a number of cultural assets that you, that you have to have within the walking area in order to qualify?
No, it doesn't have to have a number. It just, it's a density issue. It really, you know, the idea is really that you're using, I mean, we would, we would help you to be a guide. So there are towns that have already talked to us where we have said, we just don't think that we can support this in terms of density of assets, you know, one or two assets in a rural town at a stoplight is not going to really have our support around that. But North Stonington, for example, has a little tight walkable area, that little tiny little, but the amount of activities that take place nearby in terms of numbers of people and festivals at the vineyard and things like that, that actually is, makes a good case for support. But no, there's no, no number, but it really is thinking about kind of density and the center hub of those cultural, you know, what would, would, what, what would entice a visitor to come there? One thing, two things, or five things, or 10 things?
Okay, great. And then my next question was about the makeup of the commission. You know, except for Pete, and I'm probably going to offend someone else as well. Like, we're, we're all like business geeks and don't have any artistic knowledge, even though we might appreciate and I don't send economic value. So it doesn't feel right that when, say, okay, we're going to add some artists and other people, and then do we end up then with some sort of mishmash if it's a combined commission with, with EDC?
Yeah, I totally agree. So when we thought about existing commissions, the idea was not to really take you off course, right? The idea was that truly you'd want a dedicated commission. To be honest with you, I love you all, but you are not the people that I think about in terms of making decisions about the cultural assets in the community. I mean, I'm looking at Dan McFadden, I think, I think I'm with Dan. He's good. But the reality is, you really do want an artist. You really do want the arts people there to help think about those things. But you also want the business people, the restaurants. You do want the tourism people and the educational institutions. The idea is that you're using arts and culture as kind of the crux of it, but you're thinking about all the different ways that the businesses can link in, that the restaurants can link in, that the cultural organizations can link in. How can the hotels and the tourism piece of it? It is meant to not be focused on arts and cultural, but that be kind of the, the, the foundation. But ideally, you want to have, you know, tech, I mean, really thinking about the businesses who, who are recruiting talent and want employees who are hiring to say that our business is located in a cultural district. Your employees are going to be happy working here. That's why you want the cross-section of diversity of people on the commission. But we recognize that the commission right now, you, you wouldn't want to, as you say, muddy the waters with that. So the advisory council is really our, our thought, I think, the best way to go. It allows the, the arts and cultural focus, doesn't take EDC off track of things like what your number two presentation is, right? So what are you going to talk about next? But really does allow a group of very dedicated people to think about all of the cultural assets as a way to, to, you know, kind of promote the town, but not, not view you off of economic development as a whole.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Great questions. Next up is Jim.
Dave, pretty much that was, I, I, I would echo a little bit of Kevin's thoughts. I think it's a, it's a great concept. Just trying to figure out how we, what's the best way for us to interact and implement? You know, and, and want to make sure it's, we're the right, we're the right knife to cut.
Yep. Very good. Suzanne Lane?
So Wendy, when you think about Stonington, this is a great concept. Love it. I do have some arts background, but for the advisory council, can you, do you have people in your head that you know who would be great for that advisory council to make this fly?
Yeah, I do. I do. And I would also stress that one of the, now that we're kind of, you know, on the, the other side of COVID, at least, we really are thinking of this as a recovery tool, right? To really think about how to coordinate resources and people and activities around that district to think about accelerating recovery. So I do have people in mind. However, post-COVID is also telling us that we really do not want to see all the usual suspects at the table. We are really trying to encourage these new cultural district commissions to invite and encourage people who have often never been at the table to become part of it, because it is different than a normal, you know, it's not a zoning commission, it's not an EDC, it's not as direct. This is kind of, it's a more fun one, no offense, but a little bit more fun. But the, the idea really is thinking about, you know, the, the equity issue and who hasn't been there. And also, what is Stonington? What could Stonington do to attract a more diverse audience in terms of who comes here? And having people at the table who, not the same, same old. So I have people in mind, yes, but it also really is meant to be a community call-out of who is interested in seeing, who has ideas for the town or areas of the town that they've never really had a chance to put out there. What are the goals? What are the ideas? And what are the opportunities? So it wouldn't, some of them probably would be unknown to you all.
So how would we recruit those people?
You would, so the community input sessions are meant to be the way to elevate the idea so that, because the community has to buy into this, right? Your community members have to say, we want this, and we're willing to serve in a commission to do that. So this isn't meant to be EDC's cultural district. This is meant to be the community's cultural district that they are going to help form the goals for. They're going to help drive the strategy for, and they're going to help serve in the commission for. They're going to help drive the strategy for, and they're going to help serve in the commission for. It needs to be not considered an EDC project. It needs to be considered the community's. So that is the call out is, and that's the, that is kind of the, oftentimes we'll get people to raise their hands because it doesn't feel very government-y, even though it is. But we're going to hopefully help to draw out new people through, um, community input sessions, which we would, we would recommend at least three, at least three, uh, to raise information, to get people to come to the meetings, to get them to encourage to, to participate and then find out, I know you like it, I know you want it, but are you willing to serve on the commission? Because that's the biggest challenge is getting people to serve in a commission. Yeah. But we would help with that. Our job is to help if you want it and this community wants it, our job is to help find people to, to serve in those, in those positions.
Awesome. Terrific. I like it. I like it.
All set, Suzanne?
All set. Thank you.
That was helpful, Wendy. I, I mean, when I looked at the three options for commissions and, you know, you mentioned that the demographics for the EDC really didn't, uh, foot the bill that, uh, but I do like the idea, what you mentioned about bringing in new blood and the way to do that is to have the three, um, community conversations and, uh, and get people excited about it and maybe get some, some folks involved. So that, that would be, that, that would be really good. We have a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people in Stonington that, you know, I'm sure would get involved if they knew how they could get involved. So that, that's, um,
And we, we have to see that, to be honest with you, we'd have to see it. If we do three community input sessions and you're inviting people in the, in the, you know, and obviously Danielle is inviting people and EDC and, and Cultural Coalition, and you have a really small turnout, we're not going to support you in developing this, right? It's not going to happen. We need to see the community shirt turn up and have an opinion. And, you know, New London had, we probably had 30 on one meeting, we probably had 20 in another. Um, and then I think the last one was probably somewhere in between. But, you know, for us, that was enough community support and then the word spread, right?
Yep. Good. That's helpful. Next up is Dan.
Um, hi, I just wanted to, first of all, just sort of build off of Wendy's comment that the, uh, you know, the, I think one of the things here with the Advisory Council and is, is the role it could do in bringing other people to the table for these things. I mean, look, I'm with the tourism industry, but I'm also with the historic community. And we look at it, you know, culture is tourism, tourism's culture, and it's all business. But not everybody's at the table. And I do think that, um, developing this would be a good way to really get people and assets that aren't necessarily working together, um, at the same table and really develop them. And I think, uh, that would be, that would be a real benefit. On the negative side, I just have to say this, this looks like a really long play. I, I don't really see a carrot. I see, you know, slide after slide of regulations that we need to meet to meet a state designation, which in all honesty, right now, doesn't do anything. I mean, I don't know, maybe there's a law that we can't create our own cultural district by simply having the board of select persons figure that out. I mean, I think having a state designation, obviously it, it's important. But if there's not a whole lot behind it, we really are looking at years to get this done. As, as Wendy knows well, and she's been giving testimony at times I have too, we've been pursuing a tourism funding structure from the state for, I think we're going on six years now. And we're finally making progress on that. But I don't think anyone should have any illusions that anything's going to change quickly. Sorry, I'm very frustrated. It's been a hard, hard spring with these, with these different things. I just want to be realistic that, you know, uh, there's a lot of water to carry to make this happen. And I think we just have to be conscious that, don't expect a whole lot from the state, certainly in the near, probably middle term. But, you know, we'll see, there is a more receptive tourism and cultural audience now in Hartford than we've had, at least in my 10 years of sort of being around this. So I think that's good. But I do think we just need to be realistic about what, you know, what the carrot is going to be if, if we go and do this and just understand that it's not going to, there's not going to be huge support or changes from the state right away. And that's something I don't.
Right. And I totally, I totally agree with you. And this is, you know, uh, so first of all, the, the statute itself, it makes it possible for municipality to form its own cultural district, period. You can form one. You can do it on your own and have it and be done with it. And that, so the, the application part is to have the state then, you know, bless it and say that we're going to, you know, include you in marketing as a cultural district, but you have the freedom to form one, uh, however you want to form one, right? That's, that's, that's what the statute says. On that market, you know, and I told, you know, Danielle, yes, we've been at the table, how many years doing the same old, same old? And I do feel like we've made a little bit of progress this year and we'll see what happens. But, um, I think this is meant to be, for example, Norwich, New London have found this to be an attractive tool to help achieve a coordination of entities in the cities that they haven't been able to, to do before, meaning that this is a, a table that is newer, that they can use to try to achieve goals faster than they could have in the past, because they didn't have the, the structure set up. This is meant to be a tool for you all to use if you want to, and in a, and it is, you know, kind of as robustly as you'd like. So if you just want to get the cultural district part formed and maybe get the designation and be done with it, that's not what we're encouraging. We really are trying to think about utilizing this district and a commission to really think strategically long-term about goals for the town around, you know, based, like I said, on arts and cultural assets, but really more about achieving economic development goals around, you know, everything from tourism and promotion and marketing of your town and city. So it is, it is what you make it to be. And so the state is just meant to be a kind of gravy on that in terms of promotion of it. But I hear you on that. It's a lot of, I don't think it's going to take as long as you, as you think, though. I think New London's going to get theirs done in three months. They're going to seed it and they're going to get going. I think by the end of the year, we're going to see some action there. We've also asked the mayor and the city to think about, we've asked all the municipalities in Eastern Connecticut to dedicate 1% of their ARP money to arts and culture. This is a great way to seed a cultural district commission, put 1% of that money, give them a checkbook with some, you know, checking account balance and let them do some work with some of that money, um, that is, you know, allowed to be used for that. So there is a way to give them a little bit of money on the local side and we'll deal with the state at another time, to Dan's point. We'll do this, right, Dan?
A lot of that right now. No, I certainly see the value to it. I just think we need to really, and I think your point is well taken, that it is what we make of it. Um, and it, maybe it's a good fit for us, maybe it isn't. I, I'm supportive of absolutely doing this analysis to see if this really is, uh, something to pursue. I take your point that maybe it won't take as long as it looks. Uh, it just, you know, you saw again, requirement after requirement. It's like, okay, is this the best use of the town's time? But I think, I do think an analysis of whether or not this would really work. And most importantly, if the town is going to buy and a town support it afterwards as, as part of economic development, or from this commission's perspective, um, should be part of, part of our analysis, which is probably very obvious, but I just feel it's important.
Yep. Great comments, Dan. Thank you. I'm going to move to Pete Robinson.
So, uh, I think mostly everyone else has covered the questions, but one thing I did notice in the paper the other day was some funding coming from the state. There was maybe Stonington was going to get some, and is there anything going on with that? That it might affect what's going on here?
The ARP money?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting one, I think you're getting two, 2 million, right? I think that's the number that I saw is 2 million. And then, and then probably a little bit more, once you add in the county money that's coming in as well. And Danielle, I mean, she's also, all the first elect and received our letter about the 1% for arts and culture, but, uh, there is, you know, but Norwich, New London are 22 million, uh, each, each of them. But most other cities and towns are averaging 800 to 1.5 million to 2 million. And it's pretty, it's a pretty wide, you know, they're, they're waiting for the OP, for OPM to give the final guidelines, but it's a pretty wide, you know, it's to address the economic impact of COVID. Right? So, it's pretty wide.
Okay. No, I think everyone else has a good question, so thank you. I'm good.
Thanks, Pete. John Godin.
Thank you, Wendy. This is very intriguing to me. There's a lot of hidden gems in our town, but, um, I echo Kevin's comments. This is not my wheelhouse, but, um, it's, it's something good to learn. I do have a question for you, though. Obviously there's the getting the town engaged, getting the town interested, getting the town to apply for a cultural designation or district. What happens once it's approved? Do you guys help support the commission actually get started and maybe give them initial guidance? Because you're talking about recruiting folks within that cultural district who may have never served on a government board, and that has its own pitfalls.
Yeah.
Right? There's, there's a practicality is, there's complexities associated with that that people may not be used to dealing with. So I'm curious, what kind of support you give for that?
Yeah. So we, we, I literally just came from my previous call was with the New London Arts Council, uh, which is, as you saw in the requirements, if they have a local arts council to have a representative. Uh, and I, we were looking around that Zoom room and saying, how many of you have ever served on a, on a government commission? None. And there's a lot of artists there. And I can tell you now, that's a challenge, meaning there's some people that I was like, oh God, please don't, please don't raise your hand, please don't raise your hand. But, um, so what we would look for is if we see enough towns moving this direction, the Cultural Coalition would probably start providing training for what it means to serve in a public commission. Uh, and what it means, you know, how many terms, what it looks like, FOI, um, and really providing that kind of gatekeeping around, making sure people know what they're getting into. Our role really is if, if the town wants to do this, you know, as your local regional service organization, we're going to do whatever we can to support you regardless, whether it's a cultural district or otherwise. But I think we can, when we start to connect dots, we're going to find ways that we can be more helpful to the cultural districts, advocating for you all, advocating for funding, uh, but we're going to need more than one, right? So there's five in play right now. The city of Groton is looking at it, Lima's doing, I believe Lima is already moving forward. Norwich is now potentially in play and obviously New London, then potentially Stonington. That to me is enough to get us going where we can start saying, what do you all need? What would be helpful? What can we go advocate for? How can we help? We would be willing to do that for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I can see people being deers in headlights when they start listening about FOI, board governance, and they're saying, wait a minute, I want to go meet at a coffee shop and talk about this.
Yeah. Yeah, but the idea of an advisory council is that it has a little bit more free range-ness, right? That actually we want them to be, if this is a creative group, um, you know, we want them to be, uh, to be able to do that work. But remember, so the, the commission, if you should go forward, what we developed, what we heard from three community sessions in New London was, we heard the marching orders from the people about what they wanted, right? They wanted, so they wanted the silos to be broken down between, I had to give the cultural district presentation to four organizations that are within half mile of each other, because they don't talk to each other. The fact that I had to give a presentation to four different organizations that are city organizations that are, were there is crazy to me. And that was part of the issue was, okay, let's break down the silos. So the commission has the call, you know, kind of the marching orders, and then people were willing to raise their hands from those organizations to say, I'll help be a representative. So you found that people were raising their hand, because they were part of the community that said, we want to, we want to change that. They're more willing to raise their hands.
I'm good, Dave. Thanks, John. Great question. Wendy, thank you very much. I think we'll leave it at that, uh, for now. That was a lot. I mean, it's obvious that you guys have really developed the, the model since a year and a half ago. And, you know, this level of support that you might provide to help us get going is really encouraging. So, uh, I, I think what we need to do is, uh, is, is, as an EDC is decide how we move forward from here and, uh, and we'll be in touch.
Sounds good. And if there's any thought about mystics being part of it, I really recommend that probably Danielle or somebody reach out to Groton and see if they have, I mean, I can do the same thing to see if the town, not the city, the city's already moving forward, but is the town interested? Because you would want to work in tandem with them to potentially do it on both sides of the river and do it together. And we would help.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's easy to do and absolutely. Yeah, we like, we like people in Groton.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's good. Well, look, I appreciate the time. We're here to help. Obviously it's my hometown, so I'm always going to want to see Stonington cross the gate as well, right? And my former EDC that I served on, so this is great to see. But let me know if there's any questions in the follow-up. If I can send you any materials, let me know. Uh, otherwise, just let me, let me know where it stands.
Oh, sorry. Do you want to send us a PowerPoint?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you have a question again?
Yeah, that was, that was Dan. Sorry, just last thing. So Wendy, does food count as culture or not?
It, it, uh, it can. It's definitely, yes, absolutely. Cultural tourism, uh, food tourism, all of that. But yes, when you think about the cultural assets and the Portuguese here, right? You'd be thinking about all the different Portuguese elements in the town of Stonington. That is cultural. So really, when you think about a cultural district, I really want you to eliminate the word arts and really think about culture in terms of heritage, history, you know, from military to food to, you know, all the cultural elements, uh, that go into, that is as broad as you want it to be.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That makes, that actually makes a big difference, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Wonderful. Good to see you all hanging in there, everybody. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Wendy.
Bye.
Yeah, food always makes a difference. So Pete, if I could suggest, uh, an, because we, we have our, our second guest is here, so we want to move on, but if I could suggest an action, it would be if, uh, Pete, if you could digest everything that happened in the past half hour or 40 minutes with Wendy and take into account her presentation, um, maybe work with myself and anybody else on the EDC to come up for the next regular meeting with a proposal for the path forward. Does that sound like a reasonable request?
Sounds good. I'll take it on. Thanks.
Pete, if you need someone to help you, I'm, I'm available.
Okay. Thanks, Suzanne.
Yeah.
Thank you, Pete, and thank you, Suzanne. Okay. Now I would like to welcome Chris Pacheco, uh, of Sea Coast Mushrooms. He might tell us a little bit about his business, but Chris approached, actually Keith Brines and inquiring about the LI 130, which is, um, some parcels off of Tagawak Road off of exit 91. And there's some, I think, like some, some storage units, maybe there's some tin buildings that house small businesses up there. It's, it's kind of an awkward location. I, I think the, I don't know when it was established exactly, but the idea probably was, hey, it's right off the exit, so it's really valuable property. And that's probably where, where businesses would want to locate to leverage the access to I-95. Well, the topography isn't that hot for that. It's, it's, um, you know, it's, it's very hilly. It's surrounded by farmland. It seems like, uh, you know, it's kind of dotted with residences, uh, right almost in the LI 130 with folks that aren't really, um, you know, all that excited about, um, a lot of activity going on there, at least from, uh, what I've seen in the past. So, um, Chris has come up with the idea. So one thing that was missing from the LI 130, if you look at the zoning regulations, is, uh, farming is not included, but farming really is, is a business and in a way kind of light industry. Especially if you're, you know, if you're producing stuff and then taking it away and, uh, for, uh, for sales. So, you know, Chris had the idea of opening up, uh, opportunity for the LI 130 and has actually put an app, uh, let, you can, you can correct me for all the mistakes I'm making for what I'm describing here, but
You're doing great.
Yeah. Put an application for, um, for an amendment to the zoning regulation to include farming. And, uh, you know, when, uh, Chris and I had a nice conversation on the phone and it just seemed like, wow, that makes a ton of sense. I mean, it's, it's all surrounded by farmland there and, uh, but it is close to the, to, uh, to the, uh, you know, to the exit 91. And, uh, you know, if you're shipping produce out of there, I mean, what, you know, seems like a great idea. So at this point, with, you know, I'm sorry, that's not like a really great introduction, Chris, but maybe you can pick on what I left off and introduce yourself.
Oh, you did great.
And thank you so much for attending.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for, for having me. As, uh, as Dave mentioned, my name is Chris Pacheco. And I, I'm really here tonight looking for, uh, some feedback. And if the commission's willing, your endorsement of the proposal I have put forward to the town of Stonington, planning a zoning commission to amend that LI 130 zone to, uh, permit farming and all the associated uses with, with, uh, farming that would go along with that, um, that amendment. The LI 130 zone is one contiguous section of land, as they've mentioned, off of 95, exit 91. And per the zoning regulations for LI 130, light industrial, it's packaging, warehousing, some office space. And I'm simply proposing we modify the, um, zoning regulations and amend them to support agriculture. And that's really it. One of the, um, in, in several of my conversations I had with, with Keith, uh, Brian's about the,[1785.66] And that's really it. Uh, one of the, um, in, in several of my conversations I had with, with Keith, uh, Brian's about the, the change is, um, I've spent some time looking through the, uh, town of Stonington, 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development. And there's actually two references made to agriculture in that plan. One of them is in section four, uh, and section four specifically goes into detail about how agriculture is an industry in Southeastern Connecticut, specifically in Stonington. And the town should seek opportunities to ease restrictions that farmers would face to, um, to work the land in Stonington. And one of the tools the town had available to do that was the actual zoning regulations. And then in section 10 of the 2015 Plan for Conservation Development, it specifically states to modify the LI 130 zone and amend it such that it supports agriculture. So what I've done is simply made a proposal. I think, uh, Dave emailed it out to everyone. If you've had a chance to look through it. All I've really done is taken the agriculture sections that exist in other, uh, zoning districts within the town and simply applied it to the LI 130 as an amendment. In the sense that agriculture is sort of light touch. Um, and it's not to, to eliminate the current, um, uses, uh, permitted uses for LI 130, but rather to just add agriculture and aquaculture as, um, as permitted uses. So, um, I've gone and presented already to the, the conservation commission, have their endorsement, and it would be great to get your feedback. And if I, as I mentioned in the beginning, and you're, if you're willing, your endorsement of this proposal to amend the, the regulations.
Thanks, Chris. Do, do you want to say a little bit about your business, just so that folks can get to know you a little bit?
Sure. So I have a business that's been in Stonington now for, uh, for six years and it's a mushroom business. We grow, uh, gourmet mushrooms here in town and sell them at, uh, we sell them at, you know, local grocery stores and farmers' market, the Stonington Farmers Market. And, uh, I pretty much launched my business in the community here in Stonington. And I, I'd have to say I really owe, um, where my business is today really to the community. So I've been asked a lot about, hey, as we're expanding and growing, where could we go? Where could we move to? And I'm just, I'm sold and staying in Stonington. And so I'm really looking for opportunities to expand. And one of them is, is potentially into this district. I just, what I wanted to, and I mentioned this to, to David earlier, is I really wanted to separate my personal interests from something that would actually be just good for the, the town. And rather than get into too much detail about what I'd like to do, um, I really wanted to say, if this is the right thing to do for the town, then let's move forward and amend the LI 130 district. So that everyone who wants to conduct agriculture operations in that district can benefit from it. And then when the time's right, you know, come back and review, if it, if it should go forward to the planning and zoning commission and they approve it, then get into, okay, what are the things that I would like to do with my business when it gets there? But first thought, let's, let's make this amendment for everyone in the, uh, LI 130 district to benefit. Um, and then go through with my stuff in a, in a second step. So.
Yeah, that, thanks, Chris. So, um, Chris's amendment is not, uh, for his business. It's for the LI 130 in general. And, uh, but I think that was great to hear a little bit of that bio, um, that you're, uh, you know, you're growing your mushrooms in Stonington and, and want to continue to do that. So thanks for that, Chris. Um, you know, uh, so the way we, uh, what we'll do next, Chris, is we'll, we'll just go have a round of, uh, um, everybody that's in the, in the room to ask a question or make a comment. And then we'll conclude that with, um, you know, with making a motion to, uh, to provide a letter of support to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, and so to give people time, a little bit of time to gather their thoughts, I'll just offer, I don't have any questions, but I'll just offer, um, you know, thank you very much for, you know, your principled approach for, uh, approaching the town of Stonington with uh, this proposed amendment. And, uh, and, you know, I definitely want to wish you, uh, all kinds of success for continuing with your business and anything the EDC can do to help with that, you know, you can always call upon us. So, um, with that, I will, um, I'm going to go in the opposite order this time, um, so that, well, first of all, I just want to say, I, I see Sergio Trunzi is on the call and he has his hand raised. So Sergio, if I missed that for the, uh, cultural arts and cultural, um, I'm sorry I did, but if you, if you have a question or, or, or input, would, you can offer it now.
Uh, thanks, Dave. Um, yeah, that was for before, but it was, it was nothing critical. I just, uh, I had a, I had a question. That's all. So no, no worries there. I'm just here to listen right now. Um, and, uh, I, I don't have any comments on, on this application. It sounds interesting. Um, is there, uh, I'm assuming there's an application for review for this?
Yeah, there is. Uh, I, I, um, I sent it to the EDC, but I can forward it to you. That's not a big, not a big issue.
No worries. Uh, assuming, uh, that, that it fits, anything to open up more uses in different areas is, is always a good thing in my book for, for the most part, you know, as long as those uses are consistent. So, um, I'll let you guys, uh, comment. I have nothing on this one. Thanks.
All right. And thanks for attending, Sergio. Okay. I'm going to go the opposite way. So John, go then. That means you get the lead off.
So yes, I, I put in the chat that Chris, your, your mushrooms are phenomenal. I've eaten them many times. So, uh, I do want to clarify something. You said, I think I heard you say agriculture and aquaculture. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So with that in mind, are you thinking kelp?
No, I'm not. The, great question. The, I was thinking agriculture and in the zoning regulations, wherever there's agriculture, there's a slash aquaculture. So we do agriculture slash aquaculture.
Okay. So it's just kind of a generic suggestion, but all, all, all you're, all you're saying is to expand the use to include those two items. That's it. Not to change it outright, just to, okay. I, yeah.
Just that's correct.
I think, I mean, I, I always look at highest and best use of properties, but I think this is a great industry that we should promote. Um, you have a really good product. It'd be great if you had the ability to grow as much as you can in the town. So I, I'd be, I'd be very supportive of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Pete. Pete, are you there? If, if you are unmute.
Oh, sorry. I said, I don't have any questions, but, um, I think it's a interesting idea and I wish you success with it. So, um, I think it's, I hadn't occurred to me that that even was a possible use. So that's a great thing to bring up, you know?
Very good. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Uh, if I can go to, um, to Dan.
Um, yeah. First of all, I'd like to say I was glad to see aquaculture, um, not lumped in there or not. I think that's a, they're both extremely important. And it's nice to see the, see that included. Um, I have to say in general, I'm, I'm very supportive of this too. I think the more we can bring agriculture and aquaculture in sort of unexpected areas without upsetting local residents, I think is, is a great thing for this town. And I think we've seen a lot of growth in the last 10 years, which would, would, uh, support that. Um, can I, I'd like to ask a difficult question though. Like, um, what, what do you see is the objection to this? Like, what are the problems if, um, and take yourself out of it, but if an agricultural business, and that, that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people in terms of scale. Um, you know, do you, can you articulate maybe some of the problems that the opponents will? And if you don't want to, I understand, but that's sort of my question. Like where are the, where are the pain points for people who would say, okay, you, you want to do this now, but I live nearby or I live, I live in the zone and this is, is a problem there. Um, do you feel these are really insignificant? Or do you think, what, what's the, what opposition would, would you be facing?
Good. No, it's a very, very good question. Uh, thanks for asking it. I, I wasn't thinking, I, I like that you went to the neighbors because I think that's really important. I was thinking more of, okay, we've got this zone in town that's set up for light industrial. You know, what are the potential benefits the town can realize from tax revenue? For example, if a developer comes in and develops the property and takes it to its maximum potential, there's probably a huge benefit for the town with regard to tax revenue. So I could see someone being objectionable to a change that would permit agriculture in the area because the town could lose out on a good source of, of, of income. Um, and I see that actually as something that the neighbors may not like as much, um, as the town might like because they now have a huge complex, um, in their backyard. Um, as Dave mentioned in the beginning, it is, while it's zoned for LI 130, it's, it's one piece of the, the zoning, one property is really set up as sort of a light industrial where the rest of it is residences. So, um, that's what I would see to be the opposition is, okay, if a farm gets set up in there, farms is there for a while, then we lose an opportunity for tax revenue from a much larger business, um, with warehousing and packaging. Um, with regard to that, I guess that's one. And then another, um, opposition I could see would be potentially to the neighbors if they say, hey, wait a second, this guy's got a big agriculture operation here on this property. And whatever that is, um, it, whether it's, uh, I could even say odor, appearance, all kinds of things that folks may or may not like about agriculture. Um, what I can say now is having walked a lot of the property, um, there's a massive solar farm to the north. There's, um, agriculture existing, there's people with animals around, um, on several pieces of the property now, horses. Um, so there's some light agriculture, if you will, going on there right now. Um, so I, I don't know that. I, I suppose if you brought in a, a herd of animals, I could see folks maybe have a problem with it. The neighbors might, I, I, I just don't know. I don't know what people are thinking. It's one of those, okay, well, do I have animals next to my property? Do I have a, a large building and warehousing? I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what their thoughts might be on that, but, um, without trying to babble too much, those are, I guess, two areas of opposition I could see to the, um, to the amendment.
Got it. Okay. And ultimately that's up for frankly, uh, P and Z to, to sort out those issues, I would say. Um, in general, I, I, I'm supportive of this. I think this is a, this would be a good thing. I do think the more agriculture we can get, you know, in the nooks and crannies of this town, I think is a good thing. I don't think that, you know, people may say that's not the highest and best use, but I might argue in many ways, it's a very, very excellent use of the property. So all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Um, you know, as far as the highest and best use, I mean, it hasn't been used at all for, uh, for its intended purposes, LI 30. We'd have to look it up, but it's, you know, it's over a decade. I mean, it's been sitting there, um, with no development. So, uh, th- this would potentially open up for development. Uh, great question on the, on the, uh, on the neighbors. I know when Stone Acres, you know, they had to work with neighbors because they're, just because they're simply putting up hoop houses. So that was, uh, something that they had to do to get acceptance from the neighbor. Uh, the neighbors could show up at a PCC meeting and say, we're, we're not sure we want, you know, if it was, uh, pigs or something, we don't know we want that. But, um, you know, I, I think you made the point, uh, Chris, that you know, any type of farming activity is probably less intrusive than, um, what could go there as a light industry. So, uh, that would be probably stick to that. Um, Suzanne.
So, um, Chris, uh, I like this concept. I love mushrooms too. And, uh, yours are great. I've bought them before. Um, this, uh, piece of land, uh, what are the three, uh, most exciting things about that land for you? What are they?
Oh, that's a, that's a good question. And incidentally, I wanted, and Dave, you can, maybe all of you can help provide some guidance here is I want to make sure it's the right thing to do for the whole town and not necessarily me specifically. So I, I, Suzanne, I want to answer your question, but at the same time, I want to make sure we don't, um, go too far out of, I don't say out of scope, but just go too broad on it. I'd love to get your feedback when it comes to time for me to talk about like what I want to do. But I really want to see if this is the right thing for the town first. Cause if it's, if it's not right for me, if, then okay, then let's not put my stuff there. But if it's right for the town and others, then let's make the change so that everyone in the town or others in the town can benefit from the, the, um, the amendment.
Okay. All right. How many acres? I, I think I missed that, uh, in the notes somewhere. How many acres are you, uh?
There's a, there's a piece of property that's about just, it's 40 acres.
Okay. Okay. And then, um, the only issue I can see, uh, that could, uh, be negative, um, just to open that whole area up is, um, isn't it all well water up there? And, um, there, there could be concern about fertilizer or, um,
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, um, depending on what kind of, uh, farm comes in, uh, they could contaminate the groundwater, I suppose. That, but, uh, in the case of mushrooms, I don't think, uh, that's an issue.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I, I think it's, I'm actually taking notes on the groundwater thing because I think that's a great point. If someone did come in with a, a large operation that required things like fertilizer, there's definitely potential to contaminate, um, groundwater. I don't know much about the run-up and how groundwater gets contaminated from fertilizer other than what I might find on the internet. But, um, in the case of mushrooms, that, none of that exists.
I don't know how, uh, the houses are set there and who would be impacted. And then, uh, in your operation, uh, what isn't, how do you feed that material? And don't you have to replace it? And how do you do that after three years or something?
No, it's, uh, actually everything is done, um, all the production is done in, indoors. We take sawdust. We actually, for our specific, I'll tell you a little bit about my businesses. We get, uh, sawdust from, um, a place like Hull Forest Products where the sawdust is a byproduct of their milling operation. And we take the sawdust and we enrich it with nutrients, uh, grains, sprands, and then, um, we sterilize it so that we can isolate a particular organism in the case of mycelium for a blue oyster mushroom or shiitake mushroom. And we inoculate it in a, in a sterile environment. And then we permit the substrate to grow. And, um, after it's incubated for a given period of time, we then induce production through modification of temperature, humidity, um, and exposure to an oxygen-rich environment. And that, um, forces the mycelium to go into what we call a preservation of species mode and produce a fruit body that we would then harvest and take to market. So once that substrate is spent, it's simply just turned into, it could be turned into compost. It could just be returned to the earth like you would wood chips in a, uh, in a, in a garden. Um, it's really, it's just sawdust that's been enriched with bran, um, things like rice bran, rye grain. Um, yeah, that, that's it.
What, how do you dispose of that currently?
Uh, it goes to, uh, we just had a whole bunch of it taken away, I guess a couple of times now to, um, uh, Christie Landscaping. He takes it and composts it and turns it around and sells it back to the community.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Well, that's, uh,
But a lot, there, there's other farms that collect it and then they permit the people to come in and take it away. So there's not, that's a different idea to do with it. But yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sounds like, it sounds like you have a new business partner in Suzanne, Chris. Um, so, uh, next up is Jim.
Hey, how are you? I'm also a big mushroom lover. So, um, but my comments on this are going to be a little bit more specific. My business was at Tagwalk Business Park from 2006 to 2012. I'm familiar with this area. Um, I also live next to a dairy farm that milks 275 head a day in North Stonington where I reside. And I also went to UConn stores and drove past a mushroom farm all the way, uh, every time I went to campus or came back from campus. So, these are my experiences or touch points with what you're, you're doing. And I had a couple of questions for you. I checked and can you confirm this is the only LI 130 zone in town?
It is. Yeah.
Okay. So that's what it looked like when I looked at the map before the meeting tonight. I just wanted to confirm that any change here wouldn't affect another part of the town too. So thanks for confirming that. Um, two, uh, second question, the, the topography of this parcel, it looks like, I know what the front of it looks like. I never went all the way back to it. Um, how does, how does that, uh, challenge affect your plans there, I guess? Um, is there a plateau on top of that where everything would be based or?
There is a plateau. Um, it sort of goes, it ramps over a little bit of a hill and then opens up into a field. Um, and then it begins to climb up until you hit the next piece of property, which is the neighbors in back where the solar farm is located. It should be, um, yeah, the topography to me just doesn't present a challenge for, for agriculture really at all. I don't know how it would at all.
Okay. Um, as far as, I mean, uh, not trying to be PCC and ask you about scale or plans. You probably haven't developed them all yet, but this is more, um, right now, this property is, it looks like it's assessed as a farm. Can you confirm that?
It, it was, it is, it was a working farm before the, um, it was actually cut into a couple of different pieces when, um, the I-95 was constructed. And when it did that, a couple of different parcels have been spun off or one of them was actually donated to the town to create the soccer field or base of the field there at, uh, exit 91. Um, and it is, it, it was, it was a farm before. It, um, it just hasn't been farmed for, gosh, I think it's like 60 something years, 50, 60 years.
So, so even though it's in LI 130, it's assessed as a farm, it's appraised at 446, it's assessed at 48. So, so even though it's in L I one thirty, it's assessed as a farm, it's appraised at four forty-six, it's assessed at forty-eight. So that, that's clearly a farm designation. So, so I guess, the, these are my comments on it. Um, you know, obviously, we need to have farms, we need to have local farms. However, on, on this one, I think we should all think as a commission of what's being asked here. What kind of farm? What's the scale of the farm? How close is the farm to other things? In an L I one thirty district, I, I, I might want to um, propose that those peas, that what we endorse here is not a straight permit application, or maybe it's an S instead of a P on, on uh, those things. And I think that, to be honest, I think that PZC is going to want that too. But to me, that, given the potential for externalities of farms, with all due respect, Chris, I think maybe a, a special permit application might be a, a better round here, given what's around it and given that it's the only zone like that in the town. That's all I got.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Kevin.
Hi, Chris. Actually, I'm going to ask Jim a question because Jim, I didn't really fully understand your last point about Ps or Ss. What, what, can you just go back through what you're trying to get at there?
What the, what the app, what this applicant is asking for is us to endorse that this, that agri, agriculture, agriculture really doesn't apply here unless there's uh, I don't know if the, I don't, I think it's just agriculture here because it's landbound. Keeping a grain of livestock and processing agricultural products up to uh, less than ten thousand square feet would be um, available by right. Meaning that if this app, the, the, the PZC could not deny an application based on that. So what I am saying is that, given that farming at various varieties, and this is where it would be on Chris to say, you know what? It's not going to stink. It's not going to affect any of the neighbors. This is the scale of my operation. These are my setbacks. These are all the things which allow the PZC greater license in their, in their approval or, or not approving a project. And I, it sounds like from the little pieces I was able to glean from Chris, that he probably can do this. I'm just saying that for us to recommend it as a group to permit it by right, may not be the most credible thing to do. And, and again, Chris, I'm not trying to slow your roll. I think this is a great idea and I'm a big mushroom fan, but I used to be in Togwok Business Park. I'm familiar with the site and I live next to a farm. And I know what the externalities of farms can be. And I know how close your site is to other places of business.
Great, thanks. Um, so I'm supportive of this. One is because obviously Stonington is an agricultural town and an aquaculture town when you think about the uh, the docks and the fishermen. And whilst we understand that it doesn't, it is not a driver of our, of our grand list. It's part of the reason why people want to live here and why people are prepared to pay high property taxes to, to, you know, come in from exit ninety-one and see the old farms and the trees. Um, you know, Togwok Extension is, you know, basically a, in a, a fully depreciated old used area that we're not limiting the use to light industrial. It'd be nice if we had, you know, maybe more of it. But when, I think this, you look at the um, what's allowed, and you'll see there's been three amendments in the last twelve months. I think this is more of an indication of the zoning regulations being written twenty-five years ago. Um, and, and we should not have been so restrictive. And why couldn't you have breweries? And why couldn't you have a whole stack of other things permitted there? And I think we're wasting, you know, P and Z's time or wasting our time a little bit, even having to have a conversation about whether farming should be allowed in an area of town where farming used to um, uh, occur. Um, and the fact that, like, again, you know, that, that this is, you know, I assume if you had to be build a big building, Chris, then you'd have to go and get permission for that to, uh, to, to occur. Um, yeah, but I, I, I think that it's, you know, I think good on you for coming and asking us and talking to, to the others. And I would wholeheartedly recommend um, that we support, you know, any business that, you know, whilst the, 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 the property taxes may not be bothered, but if you're going to employ people, if you're going to have a product that puts mystical stonage on the map, then, then I think, you know, net, net, that's, you know, that's what economic development is here to support.
Hey, Kevin, to your point, if there was a higher and better use of this property, we've been through a few business cycles and nothing's happened yet. So obviously.
Exactly. That's why I think if there was, yeah, and, and I think now those buildings, you know, that, that's not what people want. The topography doesn't make it easy. Um, so, you know, I think a, any use that can make use of it is, 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 is a step in the right direction. And Chris, I think is, you know, would be a great person to um, to be putting some of that space to use as opposed to just sitting there.
I mean, light industry needs utilities and utilities aren't, you know, there's no natural gas or anything. So I mean, what, it's very, very limited for light industry. So I think,
That's actually a pretty important point you made there. There, there, there's nothing for utility there. Nothing at all. There's no, there's no water, there's no gas. There's just, there's nothing there at all. And there's, and there's no plan in the town to put it there at all.
I know. Yeah. But, but, you know, let's, let's, we want light industry there, but there's no infrastructure. So come on down. That's uh, right. So um, Chris, thank you very much. Um, and thanks, everyone, for the questions. Uh, at this point, I would like to make, I'll make a motion that we uh, offer a letter of support for the amendment as written by, uh, as proposed by Chris and submitted uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, for, to amend L I one thirty to include agriculture.
Uh, Dave, is this going to be as a permit by right or by special permit?
Jim, I don't think that's our call. I think that's planning and zoning. So what I would propose is our motion would be to write a letter of support for the amendment. Um, and support of agriculture and that Planning and Zoning can decide that.
Right. But he's putting in his, he's putting in his application that he wants the P. It's right in the attachment, Dave. I mean, I just want to make sure we're credible here. If we're agnostic to the type or have specific language that we do not recommend a type, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm supporting. That's all.
Well, as I said, I think we should, what I, my motion would be to support the amendment as written. And let, and so, you know, then the Planning and Zoning Commission would decide if it's uh, a P or an S.
But Dave, he's asking for a P. It is, you see what I'm saying? That we're either support what he's asking for or don't support what he's asking for. I, I just want to make a specific point here and I want to make sure we're credible when we have this letter written. I mean, I have a feeling that, I have, I have, I have a funny feeling the Planning and Zoning Board is probably going to want that little S there for the same reasons I, I mean, I, it's, it's just, again, I just want to make sure we're clear. Are we so? You know, I'm not trying to make this more complicated than it is. I'm trying to make it very simple, actually. Are we supporting this? Or are we supporting something a little bit more nebulous?
So my motion says to support as written. So I would suggest we have, see if there's a second for that and have a vote. And if it, if it doesn't pass, then you could make a different motion.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, so, so I'll second the motion uh, to write a letter of support for the text amendment, amendment as written.
And I will now go around the room and ask all in favor. Um, I'll go with Kevin.
Yes.
Jim?
I'll abstain. Nope. I thought you said Jim. I'm sorry.
Dan's a, Dan's a yes.
Dan's a yes. I, I did say Jim. So you said abstain, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be polite about it.
Okay. Suzanne?
Yes.
Dan? Oh, you already said yes. Sorry. I'm going down my list. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. So we have six yeses, one no, one abstained. So the motion passes as proposed. I will draft a letter, send it around to the EDC for comment and we'll go from there. So um, Chris, thank you very much for bringing this to the EDC. Again, I think you're, you're kind of, your principled approach for what's good for the town is what's important here. Uh, and let's keep that in mind. And uh, you know, thank you so much for uh, contributing to the town in this way.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments and, and feedback. Great questions. And I do appreciate all of your time. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Bye-bye.
All right. Bye now.
Bye now. Alrighty. Um, how's everybody doing? Good, good for another half hour?
Uh, fifteen minutes.
They're not going to take very long.
All right. Um, so the next item on the agenda is uh, is to do our project reviews for the eight projects. So I'm going to have to turn the light because I'm, so the first, the first one is the circus lot slash doll oil lot. And uh, Jim is the project lead for that. So Jim, if you want to give the group an update?
Okay, we haven't, we haven't had any meetings as of yet. I've had some dialogue with the, the owner of the adjoining lot. And I have to, I, I, I just want to fill the group in about, you know, some happenings. It seems like the board of selectmen is weighing in on this project a little bit and has, is in the process of submitting for an earmark, which is uh, been in two emails, a, a long shot, to take the entire circus lot and dedicate it as a park. Um, one of our notions in this was to saw off a small piece of a high part of the circus part, circus lot, and perhaps work with a developer to expand um, the offering and, and maybe control the use a little bit better. Um, this hasn't been really discussed with the board of selectmen yet, but here's the problem with that. Went to, went to Mr. Uh, Mr. Thomas and said, hey, we're going to split the survey with you. And if that's across purposes with the board of selectmen's initiative, which is just a notion at this point, and I'm a little frustrated here. It's going to come out a little bit, that I don't want to go to the guy and say, pay for half of it and then have it pulled away. So I want to make a motion that our six thousand dollar allotment that I asked for be up to eleven. So we don't have to ask him in bad faith to pay for half of something, which the board of selectmen, they want to do something else with. I hope everybody understands that. So that's where I'm going. Now, if we wait on this, we're about three or four weeks from not being able to survey the property from, excuse me, until the winter because it'll be too overgrown to, to a survey for that cost. So we're at a crossroads here. I think we, because the board of selectmen has chosen to weigh in and perhaps not even read the minutes from the EDC. I think we're, I think we're at a point now where I can't really do, um, or we shouldn't really do something with someone else. If, you know, there's another portion of the town government working on a completely other objective. So I'd like every, I'd like the, the team to weigh in on that a little bit.
So, so why would we spend any money then if, if it seems like the board of selectmen have already plans for this property?
I don't know if they have any real plans. It's a notion. It's an earmark. It's a long shot. But the problem is, we're on a timeline and we have some ideas for this property, but I, 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 I think we should either do all or nothing. I would agree with, with Kevin on this, but we're, we're pretty much losing twenty twenty-one if we do nothing. So write off twenty twenty-one if we don't do anything. And this is the frustrating part of it for me. We're kind of, we add a little bit of momentum. We have an engaged adjoining property owner who wants to do something with this property, really, really wants to do something. And now this. It's very frustrating.
I sense your frustration, Jim. I always think when you're caught between a rock and a hard place, then basically you don't make a decision. Um, and, and we, let's see, we see how it plays out. It's obviously, you know, it's, it's been there for X number of years. Um, it's probably a good thing that we're now getting some momentum and discussion from other parts of town about it. But, you know, I would, I personally probably think we either do nothing or we stick with the original proposal. But, or, or obviously, and over the next week or so, you might get more feedback and discussions from the first selectmen and, and others. And then you'll know, then you'll know whether you should proceed with the survey or not.
I, I mean, one of the frustrating parts, if, if it actually is an EDC project and there actually is an engaged voluntary commission that actually is doing something. Again, it's just very,
Welcome to the government.
It's, it's just,
I know, it's a, it's a pain, but this is, this is how, this is how democracy works and the left hand doesn't necessarily know what the right hand's doing. And take a deep breath.
Okay, Dave, what do you want to do?
Well, so Jim, I wrote you an email because I had a conversation with Danielle. I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not, but um,
You did.
But Danielle has proposed, as we have a, a joint meeting of the select uh, persons and, and, you know, members of the EDC. So it would be Jim and I and any, any others that chose to join um, to just, you know, kind of set the path forward. So I, I guess I don't feel so much like there's uh, folks working at cross purposes at this point. Uh, you know, I feel like uh, you, you know, there's people with good intentions that are, are trying to um, move um, a common objective forward. And we just need to all get in the same room so that we aren't stepping on each other's toes. It can have a coordinated effort. And I, I'm confident that we can do that.
The, the problem is, she suggests over the next several weeks, we still lose our window to survey. If we have the money to survey and can't spend it anyways, get the survey done. I just can't ask a guy to do that. And after he pays for half of it, it's always just going to make it all apart. We were just kidding. I can't do that. That's just not, it's, it's not what you should do.
I don't think that's, so, you know, we're in a public meeting, Jim. I, I just don't think um, we need to like, I don't think we need to get out in front of what um, hasn't even been discussed yet. So why don't we have that meeting, that joint meeting and get all that on the table? You know, to me, that would seem to be the best uh, you know, best path forward. Just um, you know, we, you know, I, I know, I know Joe Wochus is on the call and, 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 you know, he could attend that meeting if he wanted to find out more. But at this point, while we're talking, we're talking about stuff that we don't, you know, really isn't, um, we don't have the, we don't have all the, everything on the table that we need, that we can't really, we can't really get into it at this point. We just don't have, you know, we don't have all the uh, we, I, we, we need more folks in the room. Yeah.
At the last, at the last meeting, a month ago, we auth, we authorized as a group and voted as a group, I believe unanimously, to, to authorize this. So with a cost share with a private party, because we thought it was likely. But if there's now a fork in the road after that, which may make that effort, you know, moot. You know, we, we really, and we know that at the time we do it, we should not engage that individual ethically. So I mean, it, it, at some point, as long as we have the meeting very quickly and we still maybe get a survey in before it's overgrown, that's the problem. It's, once it's overgrown, they won't, they won't survey it or they'll charge a lot more money. So we're wasting time and money.
So Danielle sent out, she sent out a message requesting the meeting and so it can happen quickly. And, and let's, let's set, set that up as quickly as possible and um, and get all the, all this information on the table. But we, you know, we also have to, we have to follow the public process and, and make sure that we have um, uh, you know, have everything posted, agended and minuteed and stuff like that. So I just would say, um, we want to make sure we have all the people in the room before we get too deep in conversations where others, others should also have, have something to say.
Okay, just, just one other about the service lot, but a different, a different point. Um, I did get some stuff from Keith today about some stuff Jason had done back about five years ago with the Dollar Store application, which wasn't successful. Now, one of the things that Bruce has committed to is he's not looking to do that particular improvement again. He wants to shoot a bit higher. So um, that's something that we should all remember because what goes in that, what goes in his uh, four spaces, which you join the circus lot um, are very um, are going to be very important to the future development of downtown Pawtucket. So that, the, the character of what happens there is very important. That's all I have. And we will be meeting at some point, as a subcommittee between now and the next meeting.
Sounds good. Thanks, Jim. Um, Rich isn't here. Uh, on the, on the Greenway project, the Pawtucket River Greenway, which is the uh, Riverwalk. Um, I met with Susan and we discussed membership for a committee. So at, you know, members that would be on a committee that would make that come to fruition. It needs to be some high-powered folks. Uh, because it's a big project. It's, there's a little, it's a little bit complicated. We need to do some serious fundraising uh, to make that happen. We need to do some serious fundraising to make that happen. And then Jim Lathrippe and I met with, so kind of pick up where we left off. A year and a half ago, we had Daco on board to do a survey and permitting activity, a funded activity that would have led to engineering and eventual construction. Daco backed out, left us in the lurch. So we found another supplier of those services, Tony Nena of Onsite Engineering in Westerly. And we met with Tony this week and talked to him about the section that would connect Donahue Park to Route 1. And so he's gonna come up with a proposal for the surveying and permitting work. And in the meantime, I'll be working on trying to get that committee formed. And that's that for that. The pedestrian bridge, Jim?
There's been no activity on that. Again, the subcommittee, now that the, now that the weather's a little better, we're gonna get everybody out there, which is really the first step. And we just, we're just starting to have weather that's allowing that.
Okay, thank you. So on the stuck property analysis, Cullen is not here, so we'll hold off on that. Suzanne, were you, did you and Cullen talk about that at all?
No, we haven't talked, but some of my work is overlapping with Kevin, so.
Yeah, we'll get, why don't you cover that now, because on the individual efforts, we had the, are you talking about the pandemic-related business outreach?
Yeah, the Instagram postings. I think Kevin's involved with that as well. And so Haley, who is a intern for the town, is working on posting a business, maybe once a week at this point on Instagram. One of the things I want to do is try to get it posted to Facebook, which has a bigger following. And then we can get more exposure for those businesses, but she's doing a beautiful job. Danielle and Sue Cullen are involved and I'm not sure what Kevin's got up his sleeve there. We'll find out shortly. And then I talked to Nancy Cowser. They have funding for, for new businesses and they have funding for businesses who are trying to recover from this pandemic. So if you hear of people that need funding, send them along. I thought they had restricted it and excluded restaurants and retail, but they're covering the whole gamut now. So I'm not sure that was covered, I missed the last meeting, but if they were specific about what types of businesses, but they're, they're all in play, so send them their fancy.
Okay, great. Thanks for getting engaged in that effort Suzanne. For the comprehensive zoning update, that's, that SIP is in the, in the budget proposal, which will be voted on at a town meeting within the next few weeks, so that's good news there. On the affordable housing plan, Don Poland has completed his draft. I had a chance to review it, I think a next step will be for the EDC to, to review it. But we're waiting on the, the Department of Planning to kind of detail out what those steps are. It looked really good. I mean, I think it's something we can be proud of when it's, when it's ready to go, ready for prime time. Kevin, on the TC80 Stonington Gateway, an update?
Yes, so we're making some progress, I think in the right direction. We have got to the point where we have, I think, a fairly final draft of a vision document of what we would like to see over the next 25 years in TC80. And we are getting pretty close to having a set of survey questions. Three sets of questions, one to visitors, one to Stonington residents, and another one to business owners to get their feedback on what they think about the vision and other things that they would like to sort of see occur in this area as well. So you'll see, I think at our next meeting, we will, we'll vote on the minutes from the last meeting which occurred, or the minutes came out after the agenda for this one, but the whole vision document and the draft questions as they are posted on the town website as part of the minutes. We'll firm them up a little bit at our next meeting and the goal would be to then figure out how do we execute on getting the survey out to people who can respond, so we can then sort of react to the feedback that we get there.
Okay, thank you Kevin. I guess at this point, if there's anybody other, other than Suzanne on the individual efforts, you know, Pete already helped us out with the cultural district. I don't think there's anything else on there that's hot. I know that our next item is individual effort and that's the marketing and branding effort with Kevin. You wanted to review the progress on the Stonington 1649 website and you had a budget request.
Oh yes, sorry, thank you for reminding me Dave, I'd forgotten. So hopefully all of you saw, we've actually been, I think, three months in a row now, we've published a series of stories around the front of the first of the month. We have, in each one, we've had a poll, so on the last one, we got a, we had a poll on real estate questions. So we had a lead article on what's going on in the Stonington real estate market. I don't think I actually forwarded the poll results to everybody here, so let me do that. Dave, I think I copied you in on them, but it was really quite, you know, it's quite interesting. We also are trying to, to sell advertising on Stonington 1649. So we have one broker who is, and maybe has already paid us $2,500 to get the premier banner on our real estate industry sector on Stonington 1649. And we've sent out a nice advertising pitch sheet to all, to our, we've got a fairly good list, maybe 30 or so real estate brokers and businesses in Stonington and asking them if they'd like to get an advertising opportunity. Not so much traction there at the moment, one of the things which we've offered is that we will, we will do Google advertising for $100 a month. And so obviously we've got $2,500 in and I'd like to request that we do $100 a month of advertising for a 12-month period. And we're advertising not just real estate, but elder care, tourism, restaurants. So you look through, look at our industry sector, so the key things about why someone should come to Stonington. We hope if they then come across Stonington 1649, from there, we've got a lot of links which go out to other businesses and websites in Stonington. So I'd like to make a motion that we spend $100 a month on Google advertising on our Stonington 1649 website.
Second.
That was John?
Yep, that was John.
Any other discussion? I mean, we've gotten, so you know, we've gotten great contributions from, from Thomas Mitchell on our 1649 website. I think it's, this is money well spent, we're starting to, Kevin, we're starting to drive traffic to that website, right?
We are, yes, and I think, I haven't, I don't have a proposal now, but I think for the survey that we want to do for TC80, we're gonna have to be able to do it through the website, these polls have worked quite well. And so I think for the next meeting, I would like to, you know, Thomas has been doing all this work for, for nothing. I don't think we've paid them anything for like 12 months. So I'd like to sort of see if they can help us out with, if Thomas and maybe Erica can help us out with getting this poll set up for TC80. That, you know, I'll probably have a request to pay them some money for their time and not just volunteering on behalf of the town at the next meeting.
Okay, alright, yeah, let's consider that at the next meeting.
So Kevin, is Thomas recommending that we do the Google advertising?
Yes.
Okay, that's important to know. And Dan, do you use Google advertising?
Yes, we do, we have two things, we have a Google grant, which is a not-for-profit, is $10,000 a month that we, it's really hard to spend all $10,000, they make it difficult, but it's free Google money. It's extremely effective for us, it's even driven annual fund donations, which kind of amazed me. And we also, there are some things you can't do with a grant, we do a lot of Google keyword advertising, it's very effective. I would say $100 a month, absolutely, and we should track it and most likely spend more. I couldn't be more enthusiastic about doing this, this is exactly how you drive like an EDC kind of product here, is like I'm looking for real estate, I'm looking for senior housing, I'm looking for a marina, I'm looking for X and that's, those ads are really, really effective and they're really cost-effective too, if you do it right. And I'm sure Thomas has this all covered in that if Kevin doesn't.
Yeah, it's a good point, so I put marinas in there, I put elder care, senior living, which are, you know, key industries in Stonington.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
So we had a motion for $100 a month to support this advertising effort and we had a second. I'll just do all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes with all in favor. And, you know, Kevin, I think we'll make Thomas an honorary member of the EDC or some designation. The last item on the agenda, before we get to the adjournment part, is Chris Donahue decided not to re-up and his term ended on March 31st. So we, we do have an opening, if anyone has any candidates in mind, I encourage them to apply or encourage them to contact me and talk about what it would be like to be on the EDC. You know, we would celebrate more diversity on our EDC than we, than we currently have, not just in skillsets, but in, you know, other ways also, so that would be important to consider. And yeah, so please be thinking about that.
Dave, can we talk to Wendy about recommending somebody to, who would potentially be a cultural arts person?
That's a great idea, yep, I'll do that.
Dave, I think one of the considerations in applicants is the amount of time they can actually spend on projects and subcommittees. I think that's, that's difficult, you know?
I totally agree.
That should be a significant criteria, maybe, maybe the most important one for this, because there's, just getting stuff done, you need boots on the ground.
Yep, and I think that's a reason why Chris did not re-up is I said to him, we're looking for people that can make a commitment and come to meetings and do more, so that's really important, Jim, thanks. Anything else before we adjourn? Kevin?
No, I'm in favor of adjournment.
Jimmy, you want to keep going or you're all set? You're done, you're done, alright, Dan?
No, I just want to give a kudos and shout out to Kevin and the work that Eric and Tom have done on, on the website and the emails. And it looks really great and I've shared it, shared it with other people as well, like we, this looks really good, we should do more of this. So I want to thank you Kevin for your, your effort on that, that area, it looks great.
100% agree Kevin. Hey, there was one other little victory, you know, in this last month. 126 South Broad Street got unstuck.
Yep.
So which ones, which ones, 126?
Levant, Levant Brewing Company, that site is now.
Oh yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
And I will say, the, the focus on it from EDC and a little bit of, so what happened with EDC is they didn't really want to, they didn't want to tackle the GC60 change, so I guess said, yeah, we'll give them that one a little bit. And Ted Ladwick did a great job in the presentation, I'm not sure if anybody was on, but passed 4 to 1. And that will no longer be a derelict site and I think EDC had something to do with it. So everybody should remember that, you know, we did something.
Yeah, that neighborhood will be happy.
Certainly gonna be enough customers there.
Yeah.
It's never worked in the past anyway, that's why I hope it will be successful.
Yeah, I think for this particular franchisee, losing the spot in Route, on Route 1 on the Stonington side next to where Subway is, because of a lease dispute now makes that traffic pattern very important to them down the road. And when you look at the amount of units that have gone in, approximate to that in the last five years, hopefully that'll be the difference maker.
Yeah, and the space in Mystic is still empty.
Yep. There's another housing complex proposed for in front of Brookside, so that's right across the street. Could put another 100-plus residents within, you know, Kramer's throw.
Can you, a little bit more, a little bit more activity there will also help, I think, some of the other businesses, like for instance, where the subway is at Stonington and drive traffic, he's having occupancy issues in that little strip mall, so hopefully that'll help fill him up.
Yep.
One thing, Kevin, if you need help on those surveys for the TC80, email me.
Okay, I'll, actually I'll keep you in mind Suzanne, because they're, they're very tricky things and I'm not very familiar with.
They're very tricky and they, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'll offer up any help I can too Kevin, I've been doing a lot of survey work.
Yeah, okay, so what I might do is I might forward both of you the list of questions we've got at the moment and then you can give us your opinions.
Sounds great.
Pete, any last word and testimony?
No, I'm good, good meeting, thanks.
Dan, I mean John, sorry.
Nope, I'm good.
Alright, alright, very good, let's consider ourselves adjourned and thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks everybody, good night.
Good to see everyone.
Good night, yeah.
Yeah, good night.